There we go.
Okay.
I'll call anything to order, we'll call please.
Okay, today is October fourth, twenty twenty-three. Craig Morba.
Present.
Juanita Garner.
Present.
Al Jones.
Here.
David Norgar.
Present.
Deborah Schwartz.
Present.
Everybody's having great.
Uh, Roman numeral two, acceptance of the agenda, you have a motion please.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Closed. Any extensions? There's Roman numerals three, public comments.
One.
Zach. Oh, wow.
You read that?
I didn't.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this time it's been set aside for members of the public to address the library board trustees on the agenda items. The items of general interest within the subject matter within jurisdiction of the city. Although the city board of trustees value your comments first term to the Brown Act, it is generally cannot take any action on any items that are listed on the posted agenda. You, uh, each speaker has three minutes. Hi, Zach.
All right, hello, how are you guys doing?
Yeah.
Ready to start this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
There we go, all right. How are you guys doing? Zachary Daniel Stone here. We got Robert Schulz cornered, he's got any questions that come up today, okay? Want to check it out, library, just like I do before every meeting. Once again, we're gonna have one twelve edition, there are two of the eleven edition, one is still in hotel, we've done a twelve edition, and from the bottom, we had one. I'll be bringing that up to the little. All right, going down the list here. Volunteers at the library, um, we could add that to the agenda or give direction on that, I need something to do. I need volunteers somewhere, does that make sense? Right now, there's no way you can volunteer at the library. So I need to know at some point, maybe during the comments, whether you guys want volunteers at the library or not. I mean, it's a priority or it's not, and when can expect, or I expect at least to be able to be volunteer at the library, I have a lot of shelves of books, and that's because there's one particular set of book, which is the World Island Act, we have seven of them, pulling them off shelves, every time I go in, I grab one book. Right, it's an old trick, see how, how those are being bagged along shelf, however, but we were done tonight, so. Seven books. No. We definitely need somebody to help shell books, does that make sense? I have a volunteer that's really, so it is something that needs to be moved prior. DVDs for new, uh, computers, a lot of people like a lot of them, we need some external DVD players for the, uh, new years, very great. Drag art, I'm absolutely loving it, the drag, uh, reading, I do have one concern, I really want one for adults. It looks like it's just geared towards you. I'm like, are we just targeting you, can we not go ahead and get some teens involved, can we not go ahead and get the adults involved? Can we not have drag reading hour for all the rest of us? I really want a physical development bar. Right now, I don't feel like I can, with the sounds there towards you, so I don't know, I don't know. So maybe we can make some verification of that. The desert sun. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but for two thousand and two days in the island happening, it's not right now. For days over one hundred degrees over the past week. It has gone up every day for the most part. Why? Isn't that history? Are people not paying attention to what's going on in the desert sun, the island, and the weather section? That's blowing my mind. It was one thirteen, today it says one hundred and twenty days. We've gone to twenty days, somehow seven more days pop up. Blowing my mind. Uh, we live in a matrix now, this is crazy. Twenty seconds left. This is something I would love for you guys to do, I don't announce about this, this is on the book club right here. That is, uh, for January eighteenth, twenty-four. This is subtle art, uh, not getting the bar. Very good. So this is on book, uh, was, we're going to, uh, make sure you guys all have that now. Thank you, as always. Looking out, we need mine. We need mine.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Let's go down to Roman numeral four. You send agenda. Any concerns or any items anybody wants to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, have a motion.
So move.
A second please.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all, uh, for approval, say aye.
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 Close. Administrative reports. Uh, friends and Julie, you're gonna.
Yeah, um, the friends are, um, representatives are out of town, so I'm going to give you the report today. Um, we, uh, applied for and got the KESQ and Berger Foundation Spotlight Grant for the friends, um, on behalf of accessing the past, so they, uh, it just started running today on TV, so if you saw it, um, the cat is out of the bag, we're so excited and happy they gave, uh, the friends that twenty-five thousand dollar grant.
Yeah.
Um, they will be uh, two, oh, is it, okay, so they will be, um, coming in person and awarding to the friends at the friends board meeting next week, next Tuesday. So we're very excited for them and they are very excited as well. Um.
Thirty of you want to.
Oh, yes, one, one thirty. Also, the friends will be having a A and D, architecture and design book sale at the library during Modernism Weekend in October, like Saturday, October twenty-first, from ten AM to four PM in the main library area. Um, these are gently used vintage, sometimes one of a kind, collectible, uh, books, um, some are also autographed. They have lots of great things, um, for people who love architecture and design to come and add to their own library collections. And then it helps to benefit the friends and ultimately the library. Um, and then also Alan Hess, uh, will be coming from twelve to two, making an appearance. Um, and so if you are a fan of his, definitely come between twelve and two and you can meet him, talk with him, and he'll have some of his books there for sale and he'll sign for you as well. So that is the news for the friends. Oh, and they are working on a Holiday Bazaar in December, on Saturday, the ninth, more information to come. Any questions? Okay.
On the night to be in the library.
Of December at the library, yes. Holiday Bazaar.
Any questions for Julie? Okay, uh, Palm Springs Public Library Foundation, Bill?
Uh, yes, thanks Craig. Um, we have a, a number of things, uh, to update you on. Uh, first one is Pride on the Page. And, um, we just think we've got an exceptional, uh, year number two in the offing. Um, a lot of great work, um, big thanks to Julie, uh, and everyone else from the library staff that's helped us on this, and of course, Corey Roskin, who is the chairman of our events committee, have put together, I think, an exceptional lineup. And, uh, we're gonna kick that off with the, um, mopin, uh, a session on the thirteenth and then go into the, um, uh, forty, forty authors, four zero authors the following day for free.
Fifty now.
Oh, fifty, sorry. It's, it's pretty incredible. And, um, the great thing about this too, not only is that event going to, I think, um, spread the word about, uh, the foundation and so on, but uh, the city also gave us, uh, another grant to do this again next year for ten thousand dollars. We just heard about that a couple of days ago, so we're very gratified um, at that, uh, award and, um, FYI, we have, have used the ten thousand dollar grant that they gave us last year for, um, this year's, uh, event, so uh, lots of anticipation of, uh, some great things coming up, uh, in a few days. Um, the, their communications committee's been working real hard to identify a public relations firm to carry out and initiate our, um, awareness campaign for the foundation and, uh, a renovation, uh, project. And we had four finalists, uh, we then whittled that down to three interviews, uh, as well as proposal submissions have been evaluated and we've had some interviews and the committee's gonna make a decision, I think, next week. Um, and we're hoping to get something going with the selected firm um, in mid-November. So that's, uh, a very exciting for us too. Um, we, we have prepared our annual giving letter. That's gonna go out in November as well. Um, and that, uh, is, is, uh, a well-crafted, um, uh, letter that we send to our database, which we try to grow uh, every year, um, and solicit donations for, uh, basically our administrative fund requirements during the year. And then finally, um, we are going to have a follow-up strategy session, uh, next week, uh, in conjunction with our October meeting. We've got, um, Peter Pearson from Library Strategies, uh, that's gonna lead us in a discussion, um, taking off from the strategy we developed a couple of years ago and updating it now that we have substantial, um, forward movement on the project itself, and we've got, uh, twenty-two board members and committee assignments and so on, and so, uh, we're looking forward to that, we think that's gonna help, um, all of our board membership, uh, become more engaged and, um, everybody having a voice in setting the stage for, um, uh, the next, uh, year or two, uh, of the foundation's activities. So that's, um, that's what we've been doing.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, questions from trustees? Uh, Bill, can you send us a list of your, uh, members on each of the committees?
Uh, yes. You want, you wanna breakdown of the committees and then the board members that are on those committees?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, and then if you can get that, um, to, uh, Jeannie and then she can disperse it out to the trustees for their information.
You bet.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. We'll go to Roman numeral five C, Library Stan.
Hello. Welcome to October and fall, yay. Um, I'm very excited to tell you updates about all kinds of stuff. Um, the one thing that Julie didn't mention about the friends, it's, uh, Palm Springs Speaks, our, our speaker series, uh, the Friends of the Libraries, um, and the Libraries Speaker Series, we've got Temple Grandin coming November seventeenth, tickets are on sale now, and, uh, the proceeds do benefit the friends, which benefits the library. And it's gonna be a fabulous event, uh, it's at the historical Camelot Theater, Palm Springs Cultural Center. And, um, yeah, I'm really looking forward to that, we've got some other ones in the hopper that we have not announced yet, but we're very excited to let you know that we will be announcing at some point in the future even more speakers.
The full season.
The full season, and yes, so we're super excited about that, um. The, um, city is, um, putting on the state of the city, October seventeenth, and that is at five PM for reception, six PM for the actual event, that's at the Palm Springs Art Museum, tickets are on sale, it's through the chamber. They do that, um, um, they have invited the chair of each commission to attend, so I sent you an email, but I don't, we haven't talked about that yet, but um, to see if you're available. And, um, so that's good, I'm gonna tell you about the architect when we get to that point on the agenda. Um, Drag Story Hours for everyone, I wanted to, I actually have it written down here, everyone is invited, so it's open to all ages. Uh, we would love for everybody, everybody to come, it's October twenty-fourth at six PM, it will be in the children's room. The books will be children's books, but, um, everybody's invited to attend. And, um, we will be closed Monday, October ninth for Indigenous Peoples' Day, it's, um, it's not a new holiday, but it's a new holiday for the city, the city typically has been open on that day, but this year is our first year, we will be closed, so the library will be closed on Monday. Um, we did have a lecture last month, it canceled, it was the lecture on artificial intelligence and chat GPT. And so that has been rescheduled for November eighth. Is that six PM?
Yes.
Yeah.
Interesting.
It will be, um, a robot. No. It will be a real person, Dominique. Uh, and so it's gonna be a fascinating lecture to find out how, um, AI is kind of in there every, I mean, look at the, look at the captions rolling out that screen right now. I bet that's artificial intelligence, I don't think that's a real person. So, um, just, it's in our lives. And we can use it and use it. Um, we also are doing net tomorrow, um, a Percy Jackson Book Release Party. So, um, the Percy Jackson and the Olympian series has a new book coming out, or it came out last week, and the teens and tweens are having a book release party, that one is for teens and tweens only, uh, not for everybody, but, um, October fifth at four PM, they're gonna have a little, little fun party, so, um, grab those teens and tweens and get them out, get them to the library. Um, let me see what else is there, um, that's for sure, I'm gonna talk about. I'm very excited about Pride on the Page. Um, I wanna highlight that there is the, um, the, the Central Park Birdwatcher, who, who, the fa- you know, the famous, the man who became famous because
He was harassed.
He was harassed, he's gonna be there, Christian Cooper is gonna be there.
He's our opening speaker.
So, um, there's just a wonderful line of, and great, just people, yeah, so many others, very excited. It's gonna be an all-day thing. And, um, our teens are doing some amazing things. That is something, I lost my track of trade of thought here. Speaking of those grants, so, update on grants, the foundation, like, like everybody's, the foundation got ten thousand dollars for Pride on the Page. The LGBTQ Archives got ten thousand dollars. Um, the friends got twenty-five thou- or beginning, twenty-five thousand dollars for the Hotel Valley Spotlight. The friends already got twenty-five thousand dollars from the Anderson Children's Foundation for our teen maker space equipment. So, um, I'm so proud of, uh, everybody, all this money rolling in, it's gonna really help the library. Um, the teen maker space, we have bought, um, we bought iPads and we bought, um, these Sphero robots. They're so fun, so much fun, we need to have adult programs too for that one. Um, we took them to the employee health and wellness fair and let the, the city employees, you know, play with them on lunch breaks and had a great time with those, but the, the teens, they can make, they can use, it's for STEAM, science, science, technology, engineering, art, math. And so they, they take these and then they get to design a little chariot, like they had a balloon popping challenge, and so they had to design their, um, their robot to go up with a, with a tack, a thumb tack on the end, and then see if they could pop the balloon, see if they could drive it and pop the balloon, so just a lot of fun going on in the teens, um, we've got, um, some really fun creative things happening in there, we've got, um, book crates that teens can check out, it's a set of books and some prizes and toys that they get to keep. Um, we've got park passes that, for the, um, California State Parks, you can check out a parks pass, and it includes a backpack that you can check out, and then it's got books, guidebooks in it, and a compass and a whistle and and a map, and you get to keep some of the things in the backpack. Um, so it's a circulating backpack, so that's a lot of fun. And then, um, what else was I gonna say? I don't know. Uh, I lost my train of thought. We got a Halloween party? I'll tell you more about everything that's gonna happen on that day, Julie doesn't even know what's happening on that day. The architect, so we've got a lot of stuff coming with the architect when I get that item on the agenda, I will tell you all about it. And, and if I forgot anything.
Um, and I just wanted to highlight just a couple of things, um, we, um, based on the feedback we got from our summer program about meditation and mindfulness, we are bringing a, a monthly series for three months back, and that does start in October this month. Um, on the seventeenth is the first one, it'll be every month, um, through the end of the year, and we'll see how that goes, so. Um, but we did get a lot of feedback of people really interested in learning more techniques and tips about how to do that and incorporating it into their daily life, and so we're going to do that, and, um, so I'm happy to do that, and we had a great program yesterday about people interested in becoming a writer, um, we had about thirty people come, um, and they got really great information from the Palm Springs Writers Guild, so that was a really great partnership for us to do. And as Jeannie mentioned, um, the LGBTQ History and Archives, the library has a partner with them, and they do have their next exhibit coming up, the ribbon cutting's next Wednesday, and the exhibit opens on Thursday, um, October twelfth, and it continues through November twelfth for a whole month. Um, on the weekends, we were able to, um, the city, uh, allowed us to use the space that was on the Village Green, that was the former Aguascaliente Cultural Museum. And, uh, so that's where the exhibit will be, it, it's free, um, on Thursday. Um, it'll be from two to eight, and then Friday through Sunday from twelve to six, uh, for that whole month, and it's a fabulous exhibit highlighting the LGBT uh, people on the Palm Springs Walk of Stars that were never highlighted or identified as LGBT until this time. And we worked with the Chamber to add a new category to their app, so that is now on their app. And so, uh, we are gonna be rolling all that out next Wednesday, and, and the exhibit, there's over sixty-one people on the walk that we're highlighting, we have, um, some still living and some that have passed, but we have wonderful artifacts and other things that will also be on display, um, about some of these people, and really just kind of telling their stories, it's been fascinating to learn about all these different people, so I encourage you to please, everyone come out and see the exhibit, it is free. Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Stan?
Yes, not a question, but a comment if I may, Craig. Um, there's one thing that was, uh, announced on the, uh, October newsletter. I don't believe either one of you mentioned, but I wanted to highlight and commend because it seems to me so very important and timely right now, and that is, uh, the library's participation in Band Books Week.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I, I, I I'm proud of the fact that our library is participating in such an observance. I'm saddened by the fact that there's occasion to have a banned books week in this country these days. I won't belabor the point, but I, I'm, I'm glad we're on the side of letting uh, uh, and encouraging the freedom to read.
Yeah.
Thank you, and that's exactly, thank you for bringing that up, it is banned books week, and, um, we at the, at the library, I mean, probably every library, but specifically at the Palm Springs Public Library, at the library board of trustees have affirmed that we support and follow the American Library Association's freedom to read.
Yep.
We want, we believe that people have the, the ability to read whatever they want and and choose the books that they want, and, and we're there to help you find the books that you want and, and not, not tell you what to read and what not to read, so it's not our, it's not our place to, to judge what, what you should be reading, we, we're there to help you find what you want.
Thanks for bringing that up, Tim.
Yeah. And I, I just wanted to make a comment on your, um, backpack, you know, checkout, you can check out a backpack, I think that's awesome. So a few months ago, we had a family friend who had some toddler, and they were asking everybody to borrow a toddler backpack. Nobody had one that they could use. It'd be awesome if they could have a toddler backpack, someone could check out and take their kid on one of the local trails.
I'm gonna think, yeah, I'll think about.
Well, I, I might be able to, don't even, just thinking, this would be a cool place to get.
Yeah, we did have, um, those kits, we have, we have decent handful left, just like seven left of, of the grab and go kits, and their tote bags that have books and toys or related puppets or whatever's related to the theme of the bag, and, and those are really cute, but they don't get checked out very often, but they're not backpacks, so they're tote bags, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this brings us to Roman numeral six, Treasures Report.
Um, this is most incredible, it's a minor change if anything, there's, from the, uh, September report to this report, it was a reduction uh, basically at five hundred and fifty-six dollars, uh, and that was it.
Yeah.
So we're talking relatively no change, so.
We just placed a book order.
Yeah, yeah. So we're in good standing.
Yes.
If any has changed. It's a per investment income, you know, pay.
I will report that the city, yeah, the city hasn't, um, they haven't closed the books from last fiscal year, so. It would be great when they can get the, um, interest income completely added for last fiscal year.
This was just like, dig for everything.
Good report. Can I have a motion to accept the treasures report?
So move.
Uh, second please.
Second.
Thanks, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose. Uh, let's go to Roman numeral seven, discussion action items, uh, first of all, it's consideration of transitioning the action minutes for library board of trustees meetings. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay, so I bring this before you because, um, I became aware that the city council has, they adopted action minutes in September of twenty twenty-one.
Oh.
Two years ago, so they've, uh, if the council can do it, I think we can do it too. And one of the, uh, benefits that you will see in your staff report is that, or the advantages of tech, current technologies, that we are recording the meetings, they're completely available on YouTube, they're on the city's website, on our website, um, and so it, um, taking, you know, summary minutes or even a minute, we don't do that, but we kind of do summary minutes right now, but if doing that is repeating the work, honestly, because Lisa, I've assigned her to do that, um, Lisa has to sit and watch the video and type up the minutes, so she attends the meeting twice, you know, so it just takes a lot of staff time and when we could actually be doing other, other things. And, um, I feel like it's just important to, let's, let's follow the council's lead, if they can do it and and still get the business done.
What are action minutes?
Action minutes are, they're very simple, no action taken, uh, report was given, no action taken.
No, just to buy agenda.
Motion, second, to adopt the, the blah, 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 whatever, just a restatement.
Makes sense.
So it's just the facts.
That's great.
Yeah.
Just facts, ma'am.
Yeah.
It's on the same show.
That makes total sense.
We'll see it for the next meeting.
Drag.
I, that's why I put it on here first to see if that would be the way you would like to do it. We would prefer if we could make it for the next.
Concerns? Now. Oh.
It'd be like a good idea to me.
Yeah, doing, is, do we need a motion for this?
Yes.
I so moved.
I have a second please.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the side? Any questions? Okay.
So the motion is to, um, transition to action minutes.
Right. I have a first, two, second.
Makes total sense.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Thank you.
I have one quick question, if I may.
Sure.
I, I'm assuming by transition doesn't mean over a period of time, it's just you're gonna go and transition way one to the next.
Guess right now.
Today.
I made that assumption, but I thought I'd make sure.
Okay.
We're living this way.
I copied the city council staff report, how they wrote it, and they used the word transition and I think, yeah, I could have just said adopt, or, I don't know, yeah.
It works.
Work.
Uh, we're all under the pressure, we'll see it.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, items being, Roman numeral seven, being received, approved, largest, I know, report. Like twenty-two, twenty-three.
So, um, every year, according to your bylaws, you are, um, expected to submit a report to the city council, and we we have adopted this method to do the annual report on your behalf. We, as the library gather statistics, you see them every month in your packet, we, we gather way more than that even, um, but uh, at which we do report to the California State Library. You, you all could go see those and compare us to other libraries jurisdictions and then year-to-year comparisons and all kinds of stuff, so, um, we do a highlight of statistics and, um, Julie writes some, uh, tells some stories about different, highlights some of our activities that we did over the year, accomplishments. We try to keep it simple, in the past, it used to be a bound booklet, I don't know what it was saying, it's way too much information, but every flyer was bound into a book, that was. So now we just do a little summary of the highlights of what we've done, and, um, so then, if you, um, approve this annual report, we would then submit it to city council as a receive and file action, action item on their consent calendar, and then they just summarily accept it. And then we print it, and then people can have it as for informational handout, it's a good, it's kind of, it's helpful to us too, when we're talking to people about the library, we say, oh, here, you know, here are some of the things that we've done, here are some highlights of our statistics. It's a good talking paper for us to hand out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that is.
Put it on our website.
That is page eighteen and nineteen.
Right, I think I included a color copy in your mail packet, um, I do have some extras if you need one. Colors.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe just have a question.
Uh, yes, thanks, Greg, I'm, I'm curious if, uh, the council has ever offered any comment on this format for the annual report.
No. I think they, they, they are fine with it. No feedback.
So, I'll make one comment. Uh, uh, it would seem to me that this would be, uh, a, a handy handout, so it'd be, uh, for forthcoming work by the foundation. Not to mention the friends, of course.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we do print copies, hard copies of it, we, it's on our, we post it on our website as a downloadable PDF. So, uh, it's available, it will be available for everybody to see, and we keep year over year.
Great.
Yeah, we do keep on the web.
I have a question about it too. So the statistics at a glance, you only do current, you don't do like the year before.
I should be, oh, no, no comparisons on here, but um, this is for the fiscal year. July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So um, we're currently preparing our reports to the state library. It's due in November. We have until November to turn it in, so we compile all the statistics and get all the information for them. And I'm telling you, they ask for so much information. They ask for salaries, FTE, um, number of programs, well, everything. Number, how many items we bought this year, how many computers we have. So the comparison year over year would be just that you could access the older years annual reports and and look at them together and then um, the California State Library statistics are um, downloadable as Excel files and then you can manipulate that data and pull out just hours or sort by population served or sort by budget compared, you know, compares to other libraries with similar budget, operating budgets. There's so many ways to to move that data around.
I'm curious, just an overarching question, do they have any data suggests there's an increase or decrease in the use of public libraries in the light of all technology?
I will anecdotally tell you, um, a hundred percent. Uh, yes, we have seen a decrease in activity at the library since the pandemic. It it really, it filled our service and we are increasing, yeah, slowly, but um, we're seeing about a fifty percent decrease in in visitors and circulation and program attendance. Yes.
Last year was worse.
Really?
Is that due to the, due to the pandemic? Or what was it prior to the pandemic?
Yeah, um, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but like through the door, uh, was like in the three hundreds, four hundred thousand and we're down to a hundred and twenty, for instance, but this is better than last year. So more people are coming back this year than they did the year right after COVID, so we're seeing some increase. Um, so that's, you know, encouraging to us, but um, people are kind of slow to do that after the pandemic. They're kind of choosing different things and times. I have another question. Are the reference questions, are those coming in virtually or are they in person?
Both, but mostly in person.
Really?
They keep tally marks. It's very old. We hash mark on it, on a sheet of paper and add them up. But um, we do get emails, um, we have uh, contact us on our website and they they do count those. We do, we track our phone calls that come in. Um, I will tell you from materials checked out, we were, used to be half a million items a year circulated. And this year's better than the year before, but um, it was, it's painful.
But when you say items checked out, are we talking physical books?
We are talking, um, that one is, that one is physical items, uh, DVDs, books, music CDs, um, the eBooks, we tracked them separately, so we have an eBook category, uh, eBooks.
Twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, they're doing great. Um, I've noticed a trend, a downward trend in computer usage. As the smartphone has been, become prevalent and iPads or tablets and people having their own devices. Wifi use is fine, uh, computer use has gone down. But that had, that wasn't anything to do with the pandemic, that's just a trend.
Let me ask another question, uh, cause what I've been impressed with. Oh, I thought I turned it on. No, oh, well. As I told you, I'm colorblind, so I don't see. So um, yeah, keep me honest. But what's impressed me since I've been on the library board is the, it's not the library of old, uh, by any stretch of the imagination, no card catalogs and all that fun stuff that you used to go in and and date or something. But you become very innovative in terms of programming and continue to be so with the program, which impresses me. And it's a way of drawing people in. I think those numbers would be significantly lower if it were not for a lot of these programs. I guess my question is, as a California library, as kind of the overarching parent organization, have a, do, are they trying to study or try to put together a group that says, okay, where are we going in the twenty-second century or whatever century we're in, twenty-first? I'm jumping ahead, I won't live to see the twenty-second, but but um, because things are changing rapidly. And the way people uh, get information is changing significantly. I mean, look at the newspapers, they're declining. Bookstores are disappearing. Um, I just wondered if, and there are all sorts of new things with the artificial intelligence, I suppose and others. So I'm just curious if the state or even on the national level, they're looking at what they can do to to keep uh, the viability strong and provide offerings that are more current, not more current, but current with keeping with technology.
Absolutely. So um, in our field and our career, we have innovators like you said, nationwide, we have, um, we have a lot of continuing education that's offered to us. The California State Library has been fantastic and I would say in the last five years, even even more fantastic as far as their offerings, they pay for us, it's called the Call Academy. It's the California Libraries Learn. And so they have the Call Academy and they offer free um, trainings for us. Um, there's, there are leadership trainings. They um, they give us programs on on trends and and they look to other industries. I mean, we as librarians are looking to other industries to see how we can adapt and uh, to stay relevant and and so we um, librarians across the country, they'll go to different types of conferences that aren't just libraries. We don't stay in our silo. We try to get out there and and learn about what the community needs. We do community assessment surveys. Watching our statistics, we're, oh, well, that's not working, let's try something else. We do a lot of of um, trial and error and um, so yes, definitely, and the state library has been so helpful with um, with offering and we have conferences that, you know, leaders in the industry and love the library industry could are, become presenters and they talk and do best practices, so. Yes, we're inundated with ideas and I I wish we could do everything, so it's really exciting to see all the, all the different things and trends and and try to adapt and and stay relevant because that's how, we're more of a community center than a book storage facility, so we, I mean, we have a lot of books, we've, when you get to the architect. We're, we're, we keep track of all of that too. We track our statistics, our circulation, we we see what the public wants. We've got the Zip Books Program, which helps us um, get requests from the public for things that we might not have thought of, you know, we do have five, seven, seven professional librarians on staff. So we're very well-staffed with librarians and that's, that's their, their skill set is to help you know, watch the trip and Julie too, she's, you know, does our programs and services and you know, we watch the trends, we we watch what what books are coming out and what we, what we think we should get for our collection and yes, it's all the things. We do all the things. Yeah, so it's great, great question.
Any other questions? This will be a hard copy available to people that use the library.
As well as on our website.
Yes, so yeah, we'll put it on the website and then print, print out some, some handouts if you, if you want them to.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion to approve the annual report?
So moved.
I have second please.
Second. No one else is gonna do it?
All in favor? Yes, the next time we see this, the word draft will be off. Okay, uh, Roman numeral seven C, which I've been looking forward to.
Save the best for last. Okay, so um, now that we had a kickoff meeting last week with group four architects for our planning, they set an aggressive schedule, you don't even know.
Okay.
They're coming, uh, they're sending some um, technical people next week to do inspections of the building. Um, we want to, Bill, we want to talk to you uh, in the foundation and try to set some sort of um, funding meeting to try to get with um, get with our fundraisers to see you know, just to have a meeting with you. Uh, we want to do that. Um, so I need to set, see if we can set a meeting with you all, uh, like a capital campaign committee of some sort. We will be launching a survey, a community survey uh, next week. It's not even done, but we're gonna launch a survey next week. It's gonna be open for two weeks. It'll be in English and Spanish. Um, it'll be an online survey. We will have hard paper copies if people don't have computers and they need to come in and fill out a paper survey, we will do that. We will have an open house and um, steering committee meeting. So our open house will be on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth. It's the busiest day of the whole month. I'm not even joking. From three to five thirty in around the fish pond. We also have a Halloween party that afternoon. We also have Mahjong and we also have an author. So we have all the things, but except parking, yes. You come give your birth. They're gonna be here, uh, the architects will be in in place, but your event starts at six. So we'll be fine.
Okay.
Okay. So the survey is gonna be a great place for people who can't make the open house, um, to give input. Again, I'm sorry, yeah, it's unfortunate, it's a little, it's, the timing's not perfect, the three to five thirty is not perfect. But um, we wanna catch those families that are there for the Halloween party and we wanna catch the people going to the author lecture and we wanna catch people coming in to use the library. So um, that's really when the architects are available for that meeting. October twenty-fifth, uh, from three to five thirty. So you don't have to be there the whole time, you could just pop in or comes, you know, talk with them and it's gonna be very um, open house style.
And it's day for the.
And it's day for the leisure. Yes. So um, the um, schedule will be pretty aggressive. We're gonna do um, and we're gathering, data gathering this month. Next month, we'll probably start to look at design bubbles and some options. Um, we've gotta get our funding in place. And they're hoping to make a presentation to council in January. So we're hot and aggressive on this one, gonna get it done. And I'm sorry, I don't have much more to tell, but we've been, I've been sending the data. Lots of data this week. Book collection count, book count, programs, staffing, technology needs. All the, all the things, they they call that the program. We're doing the program right now, so we're we're learning about all the things that we currently do and kind of some of the things that we think we need, like especially technology, you know, we we're running, we've been running on a portable sound system in our community room. Just, yeah. We, we, yeah, it's kind of yeah, very, not very professional, so we need to beef up. Yeah, so happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Do you think your physical collection is gonna be static or you think it's gonna grow, considering all the technology that's coming in?
It's a very good question. We grow, we do, because of our book budget that we have, we grow the collection every year, but we need to clean it up a little bit. So um, we I don't think we're going to need more space. We're going to try to, we're trying to carve out some space, honestly, for study rooms, maker spaces, some of those things. So we need to, we need to figure, we need to balance our collection a little bit. We've got a lot, I just learned today, you know, we've got a lot more adult items than children's, you know, so we need to balance our collection a little bit more to provide more services for children, even though our population is more older adults, we still have a need for children's services. We've got a lot of kids in this town. So um, our architects are are using some of our, it, some of the information to help us come up with a plan, where to put all the stuff. So I was kind of vague on the answering the question, but I think, I think we're not going to expand shelving.
That's really what I was asking, because I think you're not, yeah. In the old days, you would have, obviously.
Yeah, but these days with the, the eBooks are very popular. We're not gonna get rid of, the, you know, we're not going to eliminate books. We're not, I mean, we're not gonna say there will be no books in the library, but.
No, no, I'm sure, but you may not have as many copies of things either, so.
Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely have to look at that and and make it um, a good efficient collection, because I think right now it, some of the things are not very efficient and we need to fix that, so. That I love, I love data. I love to look at numbers on boats and stuff.
Other questions? Yes.
Jeannie, could you expand just a little bit on the nature of the survey that I you say is gonna be coming out in the next couple of weeks, if I remember correctly?
It's supposed to, we're gonna, they're working on it right now and hopefully we can get it published for next week. Um, it will be a que, it it will be questions that will be generalizations about concepts of things that you think a library should have and um, I don't know exactly all the details, but um, it will ask you things like, what do you think is important to you to have in a library? And they'll give you some choices and you'll get to pick maybe your top three. You'll, you'll only have, it's the dot exercise. In the old, the old, last time they were here, we had poster boards with with concepts like comfortable seating. Nice lighting, you know. Uh, our, look, look, our, um, yes, like our.
Technology.
Yes, so they ask you those types of concepts and then you get to indicate what you think is important. And then they take that information and say, okay, the majority of people thought that it was really important that you have good technology here or comfortable seating or whatever, and then those are the areas that they try to focus on to try to make the library more, or they might be surprised and say, you know, everybody wrote in that they want you know, a a play place for children, you know, a playground and the, then they, oh, now we gotta build a playground, because eight hundred people said, we want a playground. Or we would call the parcerat department.
How is the survey disseminated? Only if you come in, you take it, or is it going out, pushing it out?
Yeah, we'll work with everybody. So we will be, um, it will be on our website. We will send it as an e-blast to all of our subscribers. The city will put out a, we'll put a press release, Julie will put a press release. The city will put it on Nextdoor.
Oh, okay, good.
It'll be on social media, we'll have links. Um, so the goal is to get it to as many people as possible to, because we, we wanna reach people who even are not users and find out why. A user. And see if we can address that.
And then same for the invitation for the community.
Yes, for the community meeting, yeah, we'll put blast that everywhere and make sure that people know that they can, they can come or they, you know, they can't come, they can still do the survey and um,
Right, sounds good.
Yeah, and then we'll be working with, you know, um, the building committee here. Yes, you all will be um, active in the, in future meetings as well as representatives, a representative from the foundation, representative from the friends. I'm sure we'll have all of that as part of our project committee. When we get down to that level. Hey Craig, Bill, man.
Don't you have a question?
Yes, I have two, actually, thank you. Um, first one, uh, Jeannie, when you say uh, there's gonna be a January presentation or they hope to make a January pre- presentation to council, what, what does that entail? What are they gonna present? What what would be their goal right now?
I'm not sure yet, but I think that that is the point where we have a design and we present it and I think.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We just had, we just had two meetings that were just really, you know, data gathering right now, but I think that the goal is to um, get more get down to the details and may, maybe have some options, cost estimates, have some options, may, maybe have the designs at that point. To get the council's approval and get the, we need to get the funding. That's the biggest thing, biggest thing we need.
Yeah, so, so that's so at least they'll have a scope, a general scope and uh, maybe a ballpark range of total expenditure, I I would imagine. They would wanna have that. Okay, so that's good. And then um, as far as getting together, uh, the architects and some folks on the foundation uh, board. Do you have a timeframe for that? Is that a October meeting, a November meeting? What do you think?
Um, it's uh, October. I'll email you and David tomorrow.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Makerspace, are you envisioning a dedicated space? Uh Makerspace, are you envisioning a dedicated space for Makerspace or or something that's more flexible that would move?
We're gonna let the architects tell us what what they recommend, but probably it'll be a a space that. Maybe have multiple uses and maybe, but I'm not sure. Not sure if it's gonna be, we've said, we touched on that a little bit, and maybe not specifically the Makerspace, but maybe some of the other spaces could be. Multi-use that, so they're not sitting empty all the time, but um. Yeah, I don't, I don't like the, I don't like to heavily flip rooms like our current community room. It, it, it's a good concept to say. Let's not let this space sit and let's use it for multiple uses, but when we're stacking chairs.
Tables.
Tables, bringing out computers, putting away computers, doing all of this work is. It it the, I would rather have two rooms for that.
Sure.
Honestly, because it's just, it's really hard on staff, and then you get into workers' comp if people get injured. Um I had that happen in my other library, somebody, our tables literally weighed ninety pounds at our, at my old library. And the person weighed about a hundred twenty pounds trying to move a ninety pound table, and you know, they get hurt. So that how, how cost efficient is that when you're, when you're getting injured?
Yeah.
Trying to, trying to shuffle tables and chairs around. So, uh we'll let them give us their recommendations, because they'll have their professional recommendations, and we'll see what our space can allow to, we might not have room to. Have the luxury of having dedicated Makerspace, but maybe it's a Makerspace slash teen zone combination kind of a thing that. You know. Maybe it's part of the room or, I, we'll see, we'll let them tell us.
Any more questions for Genie regarding the uh renovation? Thank you, I don't think we need a motion of that, just.
No, it's just in informations, no action. No actions taken.
Yeah, I make, your summary minutes, okay, uh we're down to Roman numeral eight. Uh trustees or staff comments, future agenda items, yes.
I'm, I'm, I've been serving as liaison to the foundation. And I have to tell you, I'm pretty impressed with the work, uh Bill, I hope you carry that back to David as well. Uh David is an incredible chair of that board as well, or president, I'm not sure what the title is. Uh but that's a big board, it's twenty two people right now, if I recall correctly. Um and last meeting, they actually organized the committees. Did the appointments, which is why I appreciate you asking Craig for a list of that. Uh Corey has done a magnificent job, I didn't know him before I started attending the meetings. So I just, I just wanted to give a shout out to the foundation that is doing the really great work, uh terrific, terrific work. Um and I look forward to continuing to to work with them. Debbie, you were gonna find out whether you had the time to join me as the liaison to the foundation board, have you figured that one out?
I do, except I couldn't come the last meeting, and I can't come to this one. That's coming up, but after that, I'm, I'm gonna be available.
I, I've been at every meeting, I've not missed them, I I so thoroughly enjoy that meeting.
Really wanted to hear the strategic planning thing, but I, I'm gonna be in New York next week, so I will not be able to attend.
I'll be there, so.
So you'll have to tell me all about it, because I'm very interested.
Okay, I just wanted to give that shout out, I haven't given a report before about that liaison role, but. They're really quite, and well, and Genie's there of course, and well, everybody's there, so anyway, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Yes.
Please let David know.
I, I hope, I'll be, that'll be the first on my report.
Uh Genie, you have a comment?
I forgot to mention that um I will be a celebrity judge for the One PS Lip Sync Battle. In November. Celebrity judge, I got asked to be uh in the Lip Sync Battle, I said.
I'll judge, but not do it.
Just be a judge, so judge and coach, so that's gonna be a lot of fun, um it's a fundraiser. And I believe it's November nineteen eight.
What is it fundraiser for?
It's a fundraiser for the um youth encouragement program at uh James O'Jesse, the Parks and Recreation Youth Encouragement Program. And I believe for One PS to help them um jumpstarts new neighborhoods. That aren't neighbor, neighborhoods, so. Yes, gonna be a great time, oh, the last one, I was a backup dancer and.
Is there a video?
There is, uh yeah, and um the winner was Mike Thompson last, last time. And he was amazing, so he's competing again, so I have to see if, if he can hold on to the reign. Um of champion. So uh. A lot of fun, it's on a Sunday, Sunday in November.
November third? November nineteenth.
Yes, you're right, November nineteen. Right, not the twelve?
But what are they calling it?
One second, now she's got me questioning. Now I'm confused on the date, because we're having rehearsal in October, but now it's November twelve.
Yes, oh, you will know.
Yeah, November twelve. I think it's at three P M. Yes. At the Camelot, yes, November twelfth, before Temple Grandin. After Veterans Day, Veterans Day Parade. A lot of fun, it's okay.
I will see you there.
So good time will be had by all and um, yeah, check out our library events, go to our website, we've got some great stuff going on. It's the season, season's kicking off.
Yeah.
We have programs. We had a wonderful author event, um Melanie Benjamin was there. And it was a great partnership with the um, the best bookstore called Springs across the street. So we had the author event at the Wellwood, and then we all went across the street for the book signing, and that was a a great, um great event. And then we all got ice cream coupons for them.
Top of all.
Yeah, see, we're all partners.
And uh any comments or questions, trustees? Anything else to say?
No.
During this meeting, uh we're scheduled for, next meeting is November first at five thirty, I'm assuming we'll still be here.
Yes. Yeah, same place.
Or this is a record, same place.